I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to your public, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Abuskado.
Here.
Mr. Bezouli.
Here.
Ms. Alcieri.
Present.
Mr. Anshinopoulos.
Here.
Mr. Ferrandino.
Here.
Mr. Vono.
Here.
Mr. Donovan.
Here.
Ms. Key.
Here. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by following means. Annual notice, which sends to the record, the South President, the observer, county clerk, and posted in the lobby on the town hall and board office for the upcoming scheduled work meetings and public meetings too. We will start off with some new business. Any board members who take exception to any of the following actions and categories of business may so indicate that actually we are going to do number one. We have resolved that the Linnhurst Board of Education opens the floor for nominations for the vacant seat within the Linnhurst Board of Education.
Nomination Stephen Vendola for replacement position of Board of Education.
Second.
Do we have any other nominations?
Nominate Giovanni Gacchio.
And we're going to take a vote and we're going to do a roll call. The first nomination is Stephen Vendola.
That was in second.
Oh, I know.
Number second.
Anyone seconding Frank's nomination?
Number second.
Okay. So we're going to do a roll call for Stephen Vendola.
Mr. Abuskado.
Four.
Mr. Bezouli.
Four.
Ms. Alcieri.
Four.
Mr. Anshinopoulos.
Four.
Mr. Ferrandino.
Lieutenant.
Mr. Vono.
Four.
Mr. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Key.
Four. Congratulations Stephen Vendola. And of course, that'll be subject to a background check. I just would like to thank all the applicants. We were very lucky to have 11 applicants all brought forth something for us to consider. And we hope that even though you were not voted to this vacancy, we hope you all continue to participate and stay engaged for our history. Thank you. So number two, under new business, we have resolved that the Linnhurst Board of Education appoints Stephen Vendola to fill the remaining portion of the vacant board seat until the January 2020 reorganization meeting. Roll call.
Mr. Abuskado.
Four.
Mr. Bezouli.
Four.
Ms. Alcieri.
Four.
Mr. Anshinopoulos.
Four.
Mr. Ferrandino.
Lieutenant.
Mr. Vono.
Four.
Mr. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Key.
Four. We're also going to take this time for a minute and we're going to make a statement regarding our referendum. In November 2016, the Board sought a referendum for additions and renovations to school facilities, including building additions at Columbus School, Franklin School, Roosevelt School, Washington School, and renovations at Linnhurst High School. The referendum proceeds were broken into two projects, the Linnhurst High School project and the elementary school project, including the lower schools Columbus Franklin, Washington, Roosevelt. The high school project was broken into two phases. The first phase would include upgrades to the media center, which put out to bid in the early spring 2018. This portion of the work was completed in August 2018, so first phase of our high school project was completed. The second phase of the high school project, which includes STEM classrooms and health and career classrooms, has not been bid at this time. The elementary school project was put out to bid at the same time as the high school project, however, the bids came in over the board's budget and were rejected. In the summer of 2018, while work was ongoing by the architect to revive the elementary school project, a state monitor, Mr. Egan, was assigned to the Board to review all the Board's finances. The elementary school project was part of that review. At this time, the Board lacks sufficient funds to complete the project as originally specified. The Board has convened meetings with the Design Professionals Bond Council for Board's auditor, the State Monitor, and Legal Council to explore options available to achieve the completion of the elementary school project. It is the Board's goal that the funds available be dedicated to this endeavor in order to meet the intent of the referendum without the need of additional funding. The Design Professionals are currently drafting options for the Board's consideration. The Board will review those options within the next three to four weeks. Going forward, the Board will provide updates on our website for the project as they become available, so the public is informed of the Board's progress. The Board is dedicated to the students and staff of our schools. We understand the burden of this delay that this delay will place on all involved. The Board is looking to work with everyone so that we can complete this project with benefit of our most important asset, the students of Linnhurst. That's our current statement. This will be posted on our website by tomorrow. And going forward, with the options that we will be receiving, we will make sure that our community is involved in the process. Thank you. This is my first time. Can't hear you. I'm sorry you can't hear me. Is that better? No? Susan said no. Is this better?
Yes.
Thank you. Again, I'm new to this. Thank you for your patience. We're going to approve the minutes. And the minutes are from the meeting number 13, November 26, 2018, meeting number 14, January 7, 2019, the first meeting, January 7, 2019, and the second meeting, January 23, 2019.
So long.
May I have a second?
Sorry.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Abuskado.
Four.
Mr. Bezouli.
Four.
Ms. Alcieri.
Four.
Mr. Anshinopoulos.
Four.
Mr. Ferrandino.
Lieutenant.
Mr. Vono.
Four.
Mr. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Key.
Four. And next up, Mr. Greco is going to give his superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. We're also going to be recognizing a student, one of our best students. We went over that board. I just want to update everybody here tonight on some things. It happened, we haven't had a meeting for a while for action items, so there hasn't been a lot of this happening since then. Recently, we put a message out about the Washington School update from Department of Environmental Protection. That was on our website for about a week. I still have it on top of my desk electronically, if someone missed it. Those results came not positive. Our students and staff are continuing to monitor the situation in the past months for another agency at this point, for the building's safety, for occupancy, as well as the, something, those results were posted, and we appreciate answering any questions that I try to, um, do. Recently, Q-SEC, which is basically required by the Department of Education that holds us accountable, if you believe it is, is one area that we haven't passed yet, instruction program. They visited the district not that long ago, and we're looking forward to positive results. Our staff members, teachers, support staff, principals, directors, supervisors, all of them, working very hard to pass that area. I know that this process started probably two years ago, and we're continuing towards a good path, and I think we're going to have positive news very soon. We're not in an official path, but we'll get that and share it with the public. Tonight, there's also a recognition to finalize, and I went in on a brief bit, with the Linnhurst High School Department, who I have not been able to explore in my short time here. It has been very helpful to me and obviously to the staff and our community in general. It's been very helpful when you can ever what possible, and I really appreciate it. I say a positive thing, it goes so well for the call of duty, and it's very appreciated. So the memorandum of agreement is just something that every district has to enter to the local police department, the governing body, it's, you know, 41 town, a school district, you know, to make sure we're on the same page. And it's mostly, you can't really change anything in it, it's basically, it's still a testament, it's basically a template we have to follow. But if you require any reform with me, we've done that, and we'll continue to meet with our commissioners that have already been out there as soon as possible. So I just wanted to have a little bit of that, safety and security, obviously, at the forefront, you know, probably, and it is our, um, concern for, um, so. We are aware of that, we do share the same belief, and our parents are very, we follow that, and, so, thank you. On a lighter note, our winter season has been underway for more than a month. Our team has been doing very well. We're also performing the lusine vibes here, it starts February 14th, Thursday, February 14th, so come out and see that, that'll be very good, definitely be a real good time for us. And as you know, we'll be doing our order presentation tonight, and also now I will turn it over to Ms. Dora, our high school principal, who recognized a student at the high school for great achievement. I'll let her speak a little bit more in detail about it, and we're very proud of the accomplishments.
Okay. A perfect one. We always try to do our best in the schools to tweet or on Facebook or Instagram our students' achievements, and we're pretty good at it, and we've got a lot of different departments, and we pride ourselves in getting our information out there, but so many times, you know, there are parents or community members that are on social media as much as we'd like them to be. So what I'd like to do is start making a habit of recognizing our students or our clubs, activities, groups, sports, that achieve really great things in the high school, because there's so many good things we're not, that it's just so often that the public and the community just doesn't get a chance to hear about it. So I'm going to make it a habit, like I said, every month, to just, you know, let you guys know some of the good things that are, that's happening in the high school, and some of the great things our students are achieving. So tonight, I have with me, Rui Rodriguez, she's a senior, and she's a leader in the high school. She's an active member, whether it's clubs, sports, activities, she's really about there's so many things. She plays a key role in FBLA, which is Future Business Leaders of America, and was member of the month in September. What's even better than that is her teachers and administration know that they can count on her all the time. And that's one of the really nice pieces of feedback that I got from your teachers today, because I did pull them a little bit. So I do want to just mention that she did, she was recognized, she won several awards and six certificates, and also a scholarship through an essay contest. It was for the 90th birthday observation of Dr. Martin Luther King, sponsored by the Martin Luther King Junior Birthday Committee. And the objective of the committee is to recognize senior students from Bergen County, both public and private high schools, whose academic achievement and community service truly exemplifies the ideals of Dr. King. They also received certificates of merit commendations from the New Jersey State Legislature, Bergen County officials. So it was a really great achievement, she was recognized throughout the county and the state, and we wanted to just make sure that we recognized her here at Linnhurst as well. So congratulations to you.
Mr. Jeff Listersford to do that presentation. After this presentation, he will be available to answer any questions from the audience.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, board members. I'm here tonight to present the audit for the year ended June 30, 2018. Our report is dated January 23, 2019. The first thing I'd like to do is review the financial position that the district ended the year as of June 30, 2018. After closing the books, recording all the liabilities, recording all the commitments and funds that were required to be restricted, the district ended the year, June 30, 2018, with an unassigned budgetary fund deficit of $4,478,51. Approximately 4.5 million. In addition to the results of operations, our report has several findings and recommendations in it, which could be found in the synopsis of the audit. We had thirty recommendations as a result of our findings in the audit, six of which are material weaknesses in internal control procedures, the most serious. Also identified seven significant deficiencies in internal control procedures, also serious, but not as serious as material weaknesses. And then seventeen general findings. As I go through the report, I'll identify which ones are considered material weaknesses and which ones are considered significant deficiencies. Under financial planning, accounting, and reporting, the first recommendation, which was identified as a significant deficiency, revolved around confirming orders, meaning orders placed and goods ordered that were not as a result of an approved issued purchase order. Purchase orders were issued after the fact, after the actual order was placed, or after the service was rendered, therefore, the purchasers were not approved in advance and recorded in the records prior to the goods or services being rendered. Obviously, this is a significant deficiencies in internal control procedures. All purchases should be approved prior to them being ordered, and the purchase order issued based on an approved order and recorded in the records. The second item, which was a general comment, in processing purchase orders for payment, we noted several instances where receipt of goods signatures and approval signatures on the vouchers were not present when these purchase orders processed for payment and checks were issued. Every purchase order that is processed for payment is required to have the receipt of goods signatures, someone certifying that the goods were received, and someone approving the payment of that, meaning that they went through that purchase order, and all the appropriate documentation was attached to that purchase order for payment. Recommendations to review rate dealt with payroll. The first one was a significant deficiency related to funds that were transferred from the summer savings account into the operating account to pay bills because of a cash flow issue. These funds are maintained in trust, the Board is acting as a fiduciary agent, money should not be borrowed from those funds and transferred to the operating funds to pay bills. That practice in the future must be forbidden. The next item dealt with pension reporting. We had retroactive salary payments in December of 2017. Those retroactive salary payments require to be reported to the state separately for pension purposes. That report was not prepared and issued to the state at the time of our order. That needs to be completed. The next item, which was also identified as a significant deficiency related to the calculation of employee contributions towards their health benefit colleges. In auditing what they call Chapter 78 contributions from the employees, we noted that the premiums used to base the employees' contributions were not based on the current premiums in effect as provided by the risk manager. It appeared that those premiums were not updated for several years, and therefore, the employees were not paid at the required amounts under Chapter 7. The next recommendation, item six, dealt with the payroll registers. Those are the payroll check registers of the employees that pay. Those registers have to be signed and certified by the superintendent, board president, and board secretary. It appears that procedure was not being followed during the year. Item seven deals with the district's position control roster. The position control roster is a complete roster of all the positions in the district. It identifies the employee in that position, their salary, the budget account number they're assigned to, also will provide benefit information. This document is used for budget purposes, should be tied right out to the budget as well as the payroll system. The position control roster, which is integrated with the budgetary and payroll system, was not updated in several years, therefore, it was not accurate, it was not in agreement with the budget, it was not in agreement with the payroll. The district did maintain an Excel spreadsheet, however, it's not integrated to the other two accounting systems. Item eight deals with eligibility of employees enrolling in the pension system and perform the order salaries. We noted several employees who appeared eligible for enrollment in the state pension systems, that's the PERS system, the TPAF system, and the DCRE system. It appeared these employees were eligible and should be enrolled in that system as soon as possible. Late enrollment in the system could result in penalties and interest charges to the district. We need to review all our employees, including part-time and substitute teachers, for their eligibility for enrollment. Next item, nine, was a material weakness. Dealt with recording unpaid bills at the end of the year, at year end. In performing the audit, we noted approximately a little over $1.8 million of bills that were not either recorded to the right year, or as an outstanding bill, or not charged to the right year were paid. The majority of that amount, over $1.6 million, resulted from open liabilities, open claims as of June 30, 2017. There was an additional $200,000 that related to June 30, 2018. All those bills were recorded in the proper years. The financial statements were restated for the beginning balances to reflect the $1.6 million that should have been recorded in the prior year, and then the $200,000 related to this year was recorded at year end, is included in the deficit that I mentioned. Something that was an interior weakness. Item 10 is a significant deficiency related to the monthly board secretary's and treasurer's financial reports for the period of December through June, of December 17 through June of 2018. Those reports were not submitted and approved by the Board. I think there was some confusion by the administration, because the district was in a deficit, in a known deficit, and the administration did notify the county as they are required to do of the deficit, those reports on the monthly basis still should have been presented to the Board and approved as being submitted. The Board nor the business administrator at any time could have certified that there were sufficient funds, or that there were no over expenditures in the financial statements, but at the very least, they should have been submitted and approved by the reports. Item 11, material weakness regarding the issue of ending the year in a deficit, as I indicated before, almost $4.5 million. There were twenty-five budget line items that were overspent during the year. The total budget for the year of 2017-18, after making the corrections for the bills that should have been back to the prior year, the overall budget was overspent about $960,000. Obviously, our recommendation there is that the district was implement, develop and implement, and put corrective action, corrective action plan in place to ensure deficits and over expenditures do not occur in the future. Need to put procedures to monitor the finances to make sure these things don't happen again. Item 12 and 13 relate to the 2016 referendum project. In reviewing the records, the budget records for the referendum project, the July 1, 2017 balances that rolled forward reflecting what was available to spend in that project were understated, approximately $7.8 million. In other words, if you looked at the report, it looked like you had $7.8 million less to spend. Reality was, the balance rolled forward incorrectly. In addition, the budget was not set up properly in the appropriate line items. the employees were not paid at the required amounts under Chapter 78. The next recommendation, item six, dealt with the payroll registers. Those are the payroll check registers of the employees that pay. Those registers have to be signed and certified by the superintendent, board president, and board secretary. It appears that procedure was not being followed during the year. Item seven deals with the district's position control roster. The position control roster is a complete roster of all the positions in the district. It identifies the employee in that position, their salary, the budget account number they're assigned to. Also, it will provide benefit information. This document is used for budget purposes. It should be tied right out to the budget as well as the payroll system. The position control roster, which is integrated with the budgetary and payroll system, was not updated in several years. Therefore, it was not accurate, it was not in agreement with the budget, it was not in agreement with the payroll. The district did maintain an Excel spreadsheet, however, it's not integrated to the other two accounting systems. Item eight deals with eligibility of employees enrolling in the pension system and performing the order salaries. We noted several employees who appeared eligible for enrollment in the state pension systems. That's the PERS system, the TPAF system, and the DCRE system. It appeared these employees were eligible and should be enrolled in that system as soon as possible. Late enrollment in the system could result in penalties and interest charges in addition to review all our employees, including part-time and substitute teachers for their eligibility for enrollment. Next item, nine, was a material weakness. Dealt with recording unpaid bills at the end of the year, at year-end. In performing the audit, we noted approximately a little over $1.8 million of bills that were not either recorded to the right year, or as an outstanding bill, or not charged to the right year were paid. The majority of that amount, over $1.6 million, resulted from open liabilities, open claims as of June 30th of 2017. There was an additional $200,000 that related to June 30th of 2018. All those bills were recorded in the proper years. The financial statements were restated for the beginning balances to reflect the $1.6 million that should have been recorded in the prior year, and then the $200,000 related to this year was recorded at year-end. It is included in the deficit that I mentioned. Something that was a material weakness. Item 10 is a significant deficiency related to the monthly board secretaries and treasurer's financial reports for the period of December through June, of December 17th through June of 2018. Those reports were not submitted and approved by the board. I think there was some confusion by the administration because the district was in a deficit, in a known deficit, and the administration did notify the county as they are required to do of the deficit. Those reports on the monthly basis still should have been presented to the board and approved as being submitted. The board nor the business administrator at any time could have certified that there were sufficient funds, or that there were no over expenditures in the financial statements, but at the very least, it should have been submitted and approved by the reports. Item 11, material weakness regarding the issue of ending the year in a deficit. As I indicated before, almost $4.5 million. There were 25 budget line items that were overspent during the year. The total budget for the year of 2017-18, after making the corrections to the bills that should have been back to the prior year, the overall budget was overspent about $960,000. Obviously, our recommendation there is that the district was implement, develop and implement, and put corrective action, corrective action plan in place to ensure deficits and over expenditures do not occur in the future. Need to put procedures to monitor the finances to make sure these things don't happen again. Item 12 and 13 relate to the 2016 referendum project. In reviewing the records, the budget records for the referendum project, the July 1, 2017 balances that rolled forward reflecting what was available to spend in that project were understated approximately $7.8 million. In other words, if you looked at the report, it looked like you had $7.8 million less to spend. Reality was the balance rolled forward incorrectly. In addition, the budget was not set up properly in the appropriate line items, as was in the detailed documents of the referendum. Therefore, we have to get the balances correct rolling forward so we know exactly what is needed, is available to spend, and the monies have to be put in the proper budget line numbers so we know where the funds are available to spend. Item 13, again, deals with the referendum, and it deals with procedures regarding the awarding of professional service contracts and amounts, and amounts that are cumbered into the records. In reviewing the expenditures of the capital projects, we noted that the professional contracts that were being charged to the referendum project were not approved by resolution of the board. And therefore, because they were not approved by resolution of the board, it wasn't a purchase order issued for the amount of the contract, then therefore, the contracts were not recovered. And as we talk later, under purchasing, purchasing program, there are issues that come up as material weaknesses related to purchasing in general, which I will discuss. Item 14, under financial planning, accounting, and reporting. As part of the audit, we review compliance with travel expense reimbursements. These are state guidelines that are adopted by board policy, and under that policy, prior to being reimbursed or at time of reimbursement, a report must be filed by the individual indicating the purpose and relevancy of the conference or convention or workshop they attended that the board paid for. There were instances where those reports were not provided for review of the board. In addition, there were conferences where the actual conference, as well as the individuals attending that conference, were not pre-approved by board resolution. Those actions must take place prior to the conference and the individuals who attended those conferences. Item 15 deals with our federal grants. The federal grants reimbursements, requested reimbursements from the state for federal grant expenditures. We noted that reimbursements were requested for expenditures that did not take place. You cannot request expenditures that take place in the far future or near future. We noted there was about a half a million dollars of reimbursement requests made in January of 2018 for expenditures that did not take place until May of 2018 and September of 2018. The general rule is if the expenditure is not paid within three days of the request, you cannot request those funds, cannot basically borrow money from the federal. School purchasing program, the area which without question needs the most improvement, an area where we had six recommendations, of four of which are material weaknesses. An area that must, corrective action must take place. The first area dealt with expenditures, purchases, and contract awards that are over the bid threshold. There are certain procedures that have to take place when expenditures are over $40,000. In certain cases, they have to be publicly bid. Bid must be sought. In certain cases, if they're exempt from bidding, such as state contracts or cooperative purchasing contracts, the board has to still approve those contracts, and documentation must be on file in the district to support that bids were made, publicly advertised for, and received, that state contracts exist and are on file with the state, and that these cooperative purchasing agreements are on hand in the district files, and they are eligible type purchases. In performing the audit, this documentation was not available in many instances, and therefore, we could not count in many of these instances if the board complied with the public school contract or with respect to bidding. In the same token, quotes, which are expenditures that exceed $6,000, there were many instances where you have to solicit quotes. There were many instances where quote documentation is not attached to the purchase order. You have to, required to have two quotes attached to the purchase order. We prefer you have three, but there was no documentation that any quotes were solicited for many of the items that are required, such as quotes. That was also a material weakness. Item three under the purchasing program is also a material weakness in deals with, when the board approves a contract by resolution, we noted in many instances that the board, when they approve contracts, did not always attach the dollar amount of the contract or not to exceed the amount of the contract. They call back almost an open-ended contract. All contract awards have to have an amount, either a certain amount for the project or for the service, or not to exceed the amount. Cannot be an open-ended contract, a money amount. That was also a material weakness. Item four is a general comment. Certain expenditures over a certain dollar amount require a clinical contribution disclosure form, anything under 17.5, and a business registration certificate if you're open from threshold. In many instances, that documentation was not on file and available for. Item five also a continued, considered material weaknesses involving around purchases of professional service contract awards. Professional service contract awards do not require a bidding. However, when those contracts are awarded, that award, that action must be advertised in the newspaper, where the board advertises that they awarded such a contract as a professional service contract that was not subject to bidding, what the, who the vendor is, what the service is that he's performing, and what the dollar amount of that service is or did not exceed. For the year of audit, we found no documentation that, that those advertisements were made after the awards were approved. Item six is a general comment. In many instances, we did not have written contracts for professional or consulting Many instances, we, because the resolution did not have the amount, or there was never a resolution, and the fact that there was no contract on file, or even a proposal, it was virtually impossible to tell how much was supposed to be paid for the services, or what the hourly rates were agreed to for the services being provided. The next item is a general comment under school food services. School food services are performed by a food service management company. It's a third party that administers the cafeteria. And in reviewing the collections made in the cafeteria, we compare the daily sales reports, the monthly sales reports, and in certain instances, there were margin discrepancies between the two, but in reality, there should be no discrepancies as they both come from the same system. The daily reports would be the monthly ones, that should be the same. We need to view this with the food service management company to make sure that they reconcile differences in their agreement. In addition, some of the days we selected for audit, those reports were not made available and provided for us, and we need to all be available for. Next area is student body activities. These are activities that are run for the school clubs, school organizations, and school athletic teams. It's a kind of a decentralized type operation. It's usually handled by the principals and teacher advisors to the clubs, and the business office does not really get involved in the day-to-day, daily transactions of those clubs. We have five recommendations under there. The first one is that we need to put in a standard, uniformed deposit accounting form and pre-doubled receipt tickets to provide a better order trail of monies collected and deposited for the various clubs. In addition to that, deposits that are from multiple students for like field trips and class rings and yearbooks, there should be a list provided with the deposit or the deposit accounting form of what students actually paid to provide a better trail. There were instances where those lists were incomplete or were not documented. Number three dealt with an instance where we were auditing a deposit, and on further review, determined that the money that was for this deposit was taken from a lockbox that was maintained in the business office. Obviously, we need to improve safeguards over the availability and who has access to these funds. It was approximately $151 of monies that appeared to have been taken from the lockbox. Item four, in reviewing the financial transactions of the student activity counts, we noted transactions that were not student-related and really should not be accounted for in there. They were things like donations for scholarship awards, grants, recycling grants that should be accounted for in the general operating fund, fees and fines that are collected. By the district, however, they're collected at the school and then they're deposited into the student activity counts. All these types of activities, grants, scholarship donations, and fines and fees should all be occurring in the general operating account of the district, not in student activity. Finally, a review of disbursements reveal that similar to purchases and disbursements made by the district in the general accounts, there is a purchase order voucher approval form. These forms are used to indicate what's being purchased, what club it's getting charged to, and what the amount is. It's signed, has to be signed as approved for payment. In many instances, there was no approval payment, but the payment was made. In addition, invoices to support the payment were not attached. Every payment needs to have vendor invoice to support that it's a eligible student activity On the transportation, we had some differences with our transportation report, which is called a DR, DRS report, and it's a census report of students who are eligible to, eligible for the district to receive transgressions they did. In auditing that census report, we noted several students who were reported as eligible who are actually ineligible, which should not have been reported for state aid, as well as students who are misclassifying between regular and, and special education. Need to improve that recording there as well. Finally, facilities and capital assets. We have two recommendations. The first one is a material weakness pertaining to the district accounting records for district-owned land and district-owned buildings. A part of our financial report and certain financial statements in the report report on the statements, the values of the district's land and the value of the district buildings, as well as the depreciation of the buildings. There are no records in the district detailing what makes those numbers count. Therefore, we cannot verify if, number one, the values are correct and that they're based on applicable accounting standards. That is considered a material weaknesses as there is no backup to those numbers, and those numbers are reported. In addition, and finally, the last recommendation, which is a general recommendation, dealt with the district's accounting of equipment. There is a detailed accounting of equipment. The equipment stand ties out to the financial statements. However, the capitalization policy is $2,000 for each individual item, but it appears the district is capitalizing things as opposed to $200, $300, $400. So the district has to make a decision either to change the capitalization policy or stop capitalizing assets that are not, do not meet that policy. That concludes my report. Again, 30 recommendations, six that are material weaknesses, which are serious, and seven, which are significant deficiencies, which are all also of serious recommendations. That's my report.
If anyone has any questions for Jack while we're doing the review, please come to me, and it would be all isolated on what we just reported on. Thanks. So I have a question on the deficit, $4.470,851 is what has to be paid back, and do you have a breakdown of how you arrived for that number?
The $4.470,851 is the amount of the deficit. Is the amount that we will be requested from the state as a loan, and it's going to be paid back over a ten-year period. The breakdown of the deficit, big round numbers, is we started the year roughly at one, the prior year audit started the deficit at about 1.1 million. We had to add to the prior year deficit approximately $1,616,000 for bills that were not recorded in the prior year audit. That breakdown was made up of $525,000 of unrecorded retro pay, the bonus pays at June 30th of 17, which has been reported, approximately $838,000 of self-insurance claim bills that were not recorded. The majority of that amount was from the runout claims from the previous plan, another $123,000 of transportation contracts, but in total, it came to $1,616,000. That, we restated the beginning balance from $1,001 to $2,731,000. In reality, the district started the year with a deficit of $2,731,000. What was added to that deficit was $1,739,489. What was added to that deficit was 1,739,486,000, which was the result of the current year operations. That's how we get to 4,470,000. The 1,739 is the result of revenues that came in short of approximately 129,000. The budget that was overspent by about 960,000. The district had a reserve, a little over 300,000 dollars for disallowed grant costs for the title one audit that is currently under appeal, but they have to set that money aside because they will most likely have to pay, if not broadly, most of it. And that has to be set aside and restricted. In addition, we had to set aside another 350,000 dollars of commitments that are made that although we don't owe people the money, the commitments have remained and we will honor them in the future. That also has to be deducted. So when you add all these pieces together, the deficit ends up at 4,470,000.
So you will be paying back contractors that the board didn't pay?
No, no, contractors will pay. We will be paying back the state of New Jersey, basically the loan of 4,400,000 over a 10-year period.
Okay, so we're going to be paying back the state, but for the deficit to happen meant that we didn't pay the $4 million worth of bills, correct?
We incurred, we either paid or we incurred bills of 4,500,000.
Which one were paid?
Some of them were paid.
Some were paid now, but they weren't paid then.
They were paid, some of them were paid.
Okay, and the other thing I have here under the capital projects fund, 1,818,800, now what is that deficit for capital projects?
That, the state of New Jersey does not recognize that as a deficit. It's an accounting issue. Because the district has not already financed the referendum, which was approved at roughly 20 million, we cannot realize a revenue until the bonds are actually sold. So there is a reconciliation in the report and the state does not recognize that as a deficit. That's an accounting deficit, but it's not a budgetary deficit.
Okay, so then we're only responsible for paying back the 4.4 million over a 10-year period, which would be about how much a year?
15, 16 years.
And so in tax-wise, that's like a half a point?
Yes.
And then just curious about how much taxes will go up on the school board, knowing that is the cap still involved? So is this a debt that goes on the outside of the cap?
It's subject to the cap.
It's subject to the cap, even though it's a debt, it's not on the outside of it?
It's considered an operating expense.
Okay, now when we talked about the referendum and the stuff, I was just curious though if the school board has written legal documents of Lincoln School being transferred over to the town? That was part of what was going to happen with the referendum?
Should you say that, we just want to work hard with the referendum.
Okay, one other question. I noticed every committee did, you know, said needed to be done. Is regular Board of Education members procedures that they're supposed to follow? When they were really doing all this, who was totally responsible to hook out for this to make sure it didn't happen? That there were purchase orders, that there were vouchers, that they did this, that they signed off? And everything that you mentioned is not the news. This has been school board procedures for years. So who in the school board is responsible? Is it your attorney, is it your superintendent, is it your business administrator? Like who tells board members you're not following this?
Once again, this is outside his purview and I'll address it when I get my reporting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
How are you doing, Jeremani? Yes, Young? You mentioned something about the political contribution of 17,500,000. What is that and was there an amount actually?
When a purchase warrant contract is entered into that has not been publicly advertised for bid and the amount exceeds 17,500,000, there is a document that vendor has to complete to record any reportable.
So it was just because it wasn't publicized?
Because it was, it was a non, what they call a non-fair and open purchase.
Okay, thanks.
Hi, Tracy Corbin. I see a lot of New Jersey statutes in violation on here. I don't know if this is going to fall under you or you. How people, I mean, if they're, we're in violation of them, how and who is getting punished for that? Is that you? Is that the next friend?
No, no, it just, when the, when the auditor cites an exception and he puts down the code that's what's being violated.
Yeah.
So.
And since we're in violation of the rules?
Yes.
How is that being punished?
Oh, punished, okay.
Or is that you in the audit?
Basically, I can say it now, it said, my business here and with the help of the auditories, I'm just looking to move forward and make sure everything is straight now. There will be team of auditors from the state of New Jersey that will come in after, sometime after the state provides us with a loan that will review the records and try to make that determination. That will be this board or myself.
Another question I had under 14, you know, financial planning. Who is supposed, in regards to travel vouchers, number 1450, who is actually supposed to, from the board, from the school, the administration, supposed to come to the board and ask for, give them the documentation for the travel vouchers before?
The documentation is supposed to be provided by the employee.
By the employee? And they're supposed to give to the superintendent or their principal? Who's then supposed to present it to the board for approval?
The board doesn't approve the form, they approve the convention, any of the person. To get reimbursed, the employee has to provide the report, the relevant purpose and loyalty to the business office and everything else.
And, sorry, there's another one. So with the problem with the premium and the benefits for employees, are the teachers going to be responsible for paying that money back?
It was a complicated situation on how the premium was ascertained and it was at no fault of the state. So it would be incorrect to try and recoup that.
So and that again will be a, that will be swung after the money, the loan is in place? And the other?
So what we did was we asked, after I got here, which I've only here six months, it feels a little long by the way. But what we did was re-computed the, what the premium, actual premium should be and immediately started collecting that. But the premium that was already foregone because of the board's mistake was up.
Another question I had in regards to the no-bid contracts that were. If somebody gave the contract and it's a no-bid, but they exceed the budget of what a no-bid would be, do they have to come, seek approval before they go over that expense? And if they are somebody who received a no-bid contract and if, if they did go in for a bid and they were considered a conflict of interest because of another position they may hold within town, do they have to seek somebody else to finish a job if it's over the no-bid?
That's a legal question.
Oh, that one?
But I was going to say this.
Yeah, yeah, I'll tell, right.
The answer is I would want to have a resolution back up the dollars that are being spent as the attorney, not the auditor. As the attorney, if you had a no-bid contract because it was underneath some threshold and you're going to exceed a threshold, certainly you want to have a public board resolution. Unfortunately, the way the public contracts law works, if you're going to exceed that $40,000 number that Mr. Bliss referred before, in the aggregate over a year, you're probably going to back an audit exception if you didn't bid it in the first place because that would be considered against one of the statutes that were cited here. But there are other no-bid contracts, and I'll use myself for example. Professional service contracts are subject to an RFP process. In fact, one of the exceptions talks about the public service, professional service contracts weren't advertised. One of the reasons for the advertisement is so you have an understanding of the fact that the board awarded a contract that wasn't bid conventionally, as we understand our public contracts law. But then the public has an understanding of what you're spending your money on. For example, whether it's in order, it was Mr. Bliss's, or an attorney, as I am, then you have to publish those. So and those can exceed the $40,000. But typical order attorney fee bills appear on the bill lists and they're not necessarily capped. It's actually the exception of the public contracts. So it depends on the type of contract you have. Okay, so professional service contracts, you may not have that issue, although you might end up, Mr. Bliss and I might have a conversation in the district where if the amount for a professional service exceeds what's in the budget, there might be an issue there. But on non-professional service contracts, my recommendation by the Board of Education would be, you need to back up the expense. First of all, you should have had an exceed number to begin with. And then you need to back up the additional money with a resolution. And be mindful, Board of Education, if you exceed a certain dollar figure in the aggregate of a year, you might end up with Mr. Bliss knocking on your door about that because that would be a problem with the public contracts.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Bliss? If not, we're going to move on to Mr. Egan, our state monitor, with his. Oh, wait, no, I'm sorry.
Hi, Cindy Sessi. I have a quick question regarding the 4.5, is that our responsibility? How wasn't that caught in prior audits? It seems like it's rolled over from one year to the next. So wasn't that something that should have been identified years ago? Okay. Now, since for, as of you, it was a prior one in firm, is there any way that instead of the taxpayers being responsible for it, that the people that didn't catch it? I mean, I don't blame board members, how are they supposed to know? We pay an auditor to come in and do our books. We pay a business administrator to follow the statutes, getting food service. Now it's our responsibility. How is that fair to the public? When we pay people to do this all these years? Is there any way legally that we can go after the former order? Or is it like overdone?
As Mr. Egan mentioned before, once the state of New Jersey issues the loan that we have to pay back, the legal community has to pay back over 10 years, there will be a forensic audit done on the books. I'm not going to comment, I would guide the board not to comment with respect to what would happen with one particular individual. However, results of that forensic audit would then lead the board to any of the next steps that might be available to them. So my, my direct answer to your question is, there's no one at this time that we're considering, however, we are anxiously awaiting the outcome of the forensic audit that will be completed. Maybe within, you know, if the, if the loan comes in in the next 90 days, the forensic audit, I understand, will take about another year to complete. Just so you have an understanding.
Okay. Seems a little unfair to us. My next question is food service. Every month I see that on our bill list. Is that something that's bid?
Yes, I think it's compared to the contract, which is similar to bidding, you know, taking those.
Okay, because it seems like that's a very huge expense to the district. And it seems to me that my daughters here at the high school, that a lot of the kids go out too much. So I don't really know where all that money goes, which is a good question. My next question, maybe this is my last one. I used to do the DRS report with South Bergen Georgia Commission. How much money did we lose by not properly sending it to the correct students? Specialized a lot of money in transportation.
Yeah, I can't quite remember how to come back and look at it. The reality is with the state is, the state hasn't increased in years. It's flat funded, but usually they only make a way. I can't, I have to count.
All right, thank you.
We must go, two very quick questions, because I promised my wife I'd be nice. So the first one, what years are included in this audit? And are we sure we're going back far enough?
It's up through June 30th of 18, Congress has everything up through June 30th.
When did it start?
It started and lasted the last quarter and a half, and it is reported a deficit of 1.1 million.
So we didn't go in Dublin?
Everything's caught up, it's just timing. So we can catch everything as of June 30th of 18 and account for it all as of June 30th of 18. So it's, it should be late at all in the year.
And I'm assuming we're auditing this year and it's all at some point?
Yes.
And then the second question is, all these goods and services, products, however they were awarded, obviously breaks all GAAP accounting standards and principles and puzzles anyone who's ever balanced a checkbook. But my real question is, are we confident that we've actually received all those goods and services and products that we paid for?
They have invoices attached, the people said they did the work. They were approved, had a board meeting, my resolution of those lists. Purchase orders were processed. Can I sit here and tell you without question, guaranteeing everything, service? Of course. And purchase orders, people didn't sign and received the purchase services.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, Tracy Montalvo. I would like a straight answer if there's going to be any legal action against any board members that will harbor the deficit. So yes or no? No, I need to make a difference.
Can't answer that question at this time.
Okay, so my next question is, anybody who was on the board during the deficit, are they not a conflict of interest? Should they be removed from the board during an investigation?
Again, and, and the reason there's a forensic audit after the issuance of a check of 4.5 million dollars is to have some understanding of what happened. A lot of the questions that everybody's asking, the question you're asking is, once we have a determination as to what happened, can actually be taken? And the difficulty, I think the Board of Education would have is saying, is committing to you that they would go after a board member or a business administrator?
Well, the board will have a problem saying that because it's their responsibility. There's nine people responsible for these things and they're not doing their job. It can pass one, maybe two people, okay, I get it, but nine? And then they're going to still sit here and make decisions? With my money, that's my money, that's everybody's sitting here money.
100%.
Not theirs?
What I would say is that Board of Education members are taxpayers as well. What I would also say though is, a lot of the issues in the audit, whether, you know, Board of Education members not going to review a travel request and is not, in fact, it's not their role to go and check that the widgets were delivered to the high school They can't do that. The ethics rules preclude them from doing that. Now, they are fiduciary trustees, so they are responsible for ensuring the protection of these assets and this budget. But without having the understanding of the outcome of a forensic audit, it's very difficult to answer a question as to whether the Board of Education, whether an individual violated whatever their responsibility is to the scope of a $4.5 million deficit.
I mean, it shouldn't be that hard. There's a president, right?
Well, the president doesn't check the widgets.
We're not talking about like 50 bucks here, 50 bucks there.
Certainly not.
Like he said, misspending $151 out of Lot Box, a Lot Box, that's stealing. We're talking about legal issues here. Somebody needs to be held responsible instead of us constantly paying. We're paying taxes. We're paying taxes. Our kids aren't even getting a good education. They're in crappy building. They're falling apart. Kids are getting sick from the buildings. This is totally unacceptable. The public should be able to request those people to resign or step down. Honestly, they should be man enough to step down themselves.
Thank you. And next is Tom Egan with our state monitor board.
Well, could they think again? It was a very sultry report that the CPA Jeffless compiled. He's an excellent firm. They were told to find everything, and they found a lot. When they found everything, and I don't know, but they didn't find substantial amount. The one thing, and there are things wrong, there's no question about it. The district is facing a $4.5 million deficit. And we're going to have to rely very heavily on the state to make that money and to make us call. But the one item that, or aspect that I took hope on was that everything he described here can be fixed almost immediately. Everything he talked about, the deficiencies, was a lack of control and documentation with the books in record. And all of that can be changed very quickly. In fact, more than half of these filings have already been corrected. So, if he ended this year by June 30, we'll have all the serious ones definitely fixed. So, we're not going to go into deficit again. We're turning the corner and going forward. You have something else going for you, in my opinion, as an outsider, in Linners. And that's your governing body in the town. I've never heard of before, and I've said it before and say it again, I've never heard it before that the governing body, in your case here, the commissioners, voted to build a school in the town, furnish it, and when it's all done, just come to the board today and hand us the key. That'd save school taxes to others. In addition, you should be aware, representatives of the board, including myself and the architects, approached the council, the commissioners, and asked them to basically reconsider the configuration of the new school from a junior high to a pure middle school. And they just, it didn't take a tremendous amount of persuasion. They listened to us. They heard us. They said absolutely. Part of the results of that, besides the educational positives to it, was the impact on the elementary schools. By taking the sixth grade out and moving it up to the new building, it created an opportunity for a tremendous number of opportunities for new plans and new designs for how to spend the funds available from the referendum. And as the president here said, we are actively studying the options, and that progress will be presented on a regular and timely basis to the public as to how we're proceeding. But our goal is to have the remaining funds of money expended in such a way that to make the elementary schools a much better place. The only other thing that I do when I say, which is probably from Linners, I think, if it's wrong, it's wrong. It's part of my nature, I have to present. One of the things here was circulating in media and the social media and the press about attacks and comments about some of the members of the commission. I found no wrongdoing on the airport. What I did find was a lack of documents here to document expenditures and works that not only that all vendors used. And I just want to reassure the public, we are investigating. And when the forensic audit is begun, all these allegations or comments or suspicions will be investigated. But to act upon it now without any evidence or just suspicions because they came and did a lot of work for the school in the construction area, it's kind of unfair. These buildings, here in Linners, I don't explain it, are all very old. And if you have a building that's old, you're going to have electrical problems. You're going to have plumbing problems. Every time you turn around. And they have to. I was talking to the head custodian here tonight, and they, before I got here, they made changes in the maintenance staff to try and get problems with here. They had, in the last week, they had five problems with sinks. Two sinks fell off the wall. A couple of sinks where they couldn't operate the houses that were. And they got them fixed, so that without disrupting the school. So, what I ask of you is, have a little patience. We're looking for you on it. But before you jump down and try totally criticize someone, have some facts. Thank you. Don't worry.
Next, we're going to have the public hearing on the agenda of Mr. Vice and Senator Bliss, the people who signed up to ask or comment questions regarding the agenda. Mrs. Bell, would you like to come to the podium?
Yes, I would. Yes, I have questions.
Thank you. Tracy Montalvo. We had on the flat side, 2312 is for a second reading. I know from previous times that you guys don't have to read it. What's being changed about the flat side again?
It's not being changed. We've just kept along with it. I feel it could be now where we originally had this wall. You know, where we originally had on the document, that the board that was wrong, so it just.
Okay, so it's still staying at 25 and based on the basis.
It's above 25, is what it is. So, that was the classification. That's why it's.
So, what is the due now?
Above 25.
Okay.
It's still up. Gotcha.
Michelle Bell.
How are you guys? There's a few things that I want to share with you guys. I have three children that have entered the system at some point. And there's a few things that I think you guys should be made aware of. I know you guys are working on some infrastructure here. And I would like to talk about the communication that goes on in the district. Lately, I've been trying to contact members of the Board of Education, and it's been very difficult. I have been serving as a member of the PCA the last few years. I was the treasurer at the Roosevelt School PCA. And, you know, getting in touch with people in the district has been extremely difficult. Recently, I've been trying to get in touch with people at the Board of Education on Hardin Avenue. I want to give you a, for instance, when I call the Board of Education office, I dial any extension. No one picks up the phone. If I hit zero, it tells me to call back during regular business hours. The times I call are 8 o'clock, 8:15, 8:30, 9 o'clock. That's during my practice. I'm a teacher. I don't have another time to call until 1 o'clock in the afternoon. I still get that message. I know you guys are open. I actually become very upset because I can't get in touch with anybody. I just hit any number, any extension. I want to talk to a live person. No one picks up the phone. I left voicemail. No one calls me back. Other things that I also want to talk to you guys, Bell. I also look for things to get support. Fundraising is one of them. I know that we all look to enhance our kids' education. One of the things that we promoted when I was on the Roosevelt School PCA was to enhance the educational experience. When Mr. De Corso was the principal there, we targeted reading as one of the programs that we wanted to promote. And it was wonderful. Actually, speaking to Mr. Rizzo recently, he was, he pointed out as jealous, just to let you know, Mr. De Corso, that we bought readers and built up the library because it was something that was very important. And Ms. Debowski and I felt that was very, and she was the president at the time and still is of the PCA. So, we earmarked money with our fundraisers to enhance the library, to support the reading program, which is what we did. Now, talking about that, we believe that that's still a priority. Speaking of reading, my son, who's now in third grade, I discovered that there's some issues that are going on with him. Come to find out, the bubble dropped and that things weren't done in recent years and communication was not being had. I also have discovered that Mr. De Corso, being now the director of curriculum instruction, has put into place wonderful things and have identified improving the reading program, which makes me very happy. But in the meantime, when things weren't happening at that time, he wasn't the director of that instruction. Things weren't being done. So, being in education, but because I am a special ed teacher, I get the kids that are after it back. So, I feel bad that I didn't see this with my own son. And I'm very upset by this. So, now I think time has missed. Not that we can't catch him up, but I'm very disappointed. So, now I am myself looking for things to catch him up. But these are simple things. I had a wonderful meeting with Ms. Birdino and Mr. Rizzo. So, things are in place. But now I wonder, why are things not being placed? So, I do want to have further discussions and further meetings with administration. And things are happening. Other things I want to see better communication is with academic calendars, not the ones that you guys approve and that you guys are going to be working on. I'm talking about digital things. Because now we are in a digital age, these are things that are free and cheap and are at your disposal. There's no excuse. It doesn't cost a dime. These are things that we have already. I don't want to see it happen. The webpage manager is terrible. I want to see it be better. I took some time over the weekend while I was writing my new terms because I'm doing some fundraisers for the eighth grade committee at Roosevelt School. Horrendous. They're absolutely horrendous. I want them cleaned up. I want some continuity. It's free. It's doable. We can make it better. I sent an email to one of the teachers. I know she travels from school to school. Sent her an email in early December. Haven't gone, she hasn't gone back to me yet. Doesn't matter. This is my time. Feedback to parents are so important. I want to improve the kids' education. This is free. It doesn't cost a dime. I want to make it better. I want to make it better now. I don't want to wait till next year. This can happen right now. I want to bring back the after-school programs. I want to see this happen now. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. We're definitely going to be looking into that phone issue that you've spoken with. And a couple of things I want to know with regards to the webpage and technology, what's free and how to fund the key. If you notice tonight, one of the things on the agenda is the list of committees. One of the new committees we have is technology committee because we do recognize that our website is not as user-friendly as we'd like for parents. And also, in general, a lot of the information needs to be streamlined and coordinated. So, I appreciate you speaking tonight. Thank you.
You know, just to follow up, we're definitely looking into the phone issue. So, personally, not I represent the Linners side, probably, so. I apologize on my, it's definitely happened. And I will definitely reach out very soon. And yes, just to piggyback on the technology, it's definitely something that's not on the deep radar, not on the long-term radar. There has been in the past There has been in the past different stake in positions to form the website, but unfortunately, it's not a priority for us right now, so, um, because we have some other issues. So we have had our administration step back and some of our staff, which is all to the same as possible. But we, we're aware it's a way in front of us, even within the technology aspect itself. It's probably not the highest on our priorities, but it's definitely up there. I also agree with the implementation of why we want to talk about the language workshop, where is workshop, something, Mr. De Corso, at least I would agree with this. So it's definitely something that they want to, we want to be consistent across the schools, not just a one building or two buildings, but an all building they had specifically. So if you're secondary, one school, you're a senior, secondary another school. So we share a lot of the same ideas, but in my head, I don't know. So I follow up with the person.
We have finally made it to the end of our session. So you board with a business, or any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of business, may so indicate now in a separate motion for each of the accepted actions to be entertained. And I have a motion for, for number three, because we already gave one and two earlier this evening, three through number nine. All right, so that's seconded by Jim. Okay, roll call.
Mr. Ramuska, four. Mr. Bezoni, four. Mr. Saucieri, four. Mr. Antonopoulos, four. Mr. Verdino, four. Mr. Vodov, four. Mr. Donovan, four. Ms. King.
Hi, everybody. Really quick, before we hit the finance part of the agenda, I just want to, you're going to see here, we're going to be approving a corrective action plan. This correction action plan has thirty findings from the auditor, as he said. Fifteen of those, I just want to note, fifteen of those have already been implemented and were completed at this time, back from October of twenty seventeen with our new business administrator. This will be posted, right, on our website, the corrective action plan, along with the audit. So, you know, back in twenty seventeen, October, we already made changes to correct a lot of the stuff that was found by our current auditor. Also, I just want to mention that the teachers' contract expires on June thirtieth of this year. The board will be entering into negotiations with the teachers, which is something that's beginning to be coming up. And the finance committee will be starting to meet and start producing, start working on the next year's budget, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. And that's that. So we hit this, any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of finance facilities in District Planning Committee may so indicate now, and a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertaining. I make a motion to that the following finance facility in District Planning Committees, number one through twenty-nine, that's one through twenty-nine, be accepted.
Mr. Ramuska, four. Mr. Bezoni, four. Mr. Saucieri, four. Mr. Antonopoulos, four. Mr. Verdino, four. Mr. Vodov, four. Mr. Donovan, four. Ms. King.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of education in the board committee may so indicate now, and a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I make a motion that one to five be accepted as read.
Mr. Ramuska, four. Mr. Bezoni, four. Same for three, one, two, four, five, four. Mr. Saucieri, four. Mr. Antonopoulos, four. Mr. Verdino, four. Mr. Vodov, four. Mr. Donovan, four. Ms. King. Well, there, we haven't done this in a while. Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of policies, rules, regulations, may do so now, and a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I make a motion to accept one through six.
Roll call.
Mr. Ramuska, four. Mr. Bezoni, four. Mr. Saucieri, four. Mr. Antonopoulos, four. Mr. Verdino, four.
Cast to abstain from number two. For the information, the GPA, cast on the other, four.
Mr. Vodov, four. Mr. Donovan, four. Ms. King. Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of personnel, may so indicate now in a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I make a motion that either one through four, four to zero, one through forty, um, be approved.
Roll call.
Mr. Ramuska, four. Mr. Bezoni, four. Mr. Saucieri, four. Mr. Antonopoulos, four. Mr. Verdino, four. Mr. Vodov, four. Mr. Donovan, four. Ms. King.
Uh, well, we're now moving to public hearing, items other than on the agenda. The first person is, who's the lead staff?
Um, this would be for state monitor. How long will it take them to do a run supportive of the school?
There's a couple variables. One is, how do you want to say, sign, uh, to complete, uh, key, no, absolutely. Or, yeah.
The timeline would be at six months? Six months, okay. Also, um, the school board owns Lincoln School. I understand with the fifty million dollar school that they're building, supposedly the school board transferred Lincoln School to the town that they will get the money when they sell the building. So is that pay board in place from the school board?
No, no. The, uh, I haven't seen the document, but I understand that if I ran the agreement, that the town will build a brand of school and all that completion. That the school is occupied, they'll turn off the town once they return the title, like the school's everything type.
Yeah, so then the town will get whatever Lincoln School, if they sell a four, three, or five, the town will get the money, not the school.
Correct.
Thank you. The next person listed is Tracy Kwan.
Hey, everybody. Um, Ms. Tracy, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, if anything's close to wrong from northjersey.com because I didn't get to make it to the mission meeting. They, that you received verbal consent from them to designate, re-designate the school from seventh to ninth, to sixth to eighth grade. And the article said that you didn't have to ask their permission, it was as a board decision on how a school gets designated. So if that is true, why is the new school being designated as a middle school and not a high school?
It's quite a funny choice. It's not a new school, which would come down to a high school.
Well, first of all, it's the town that was building the school.
Yes.
Right. And so, um, I think it's very important that the school, the Board of Education was collaborating with commissioners. And then they had designed it or thought about it being a, uh, a junior high. We approached them, give us the, the whole arm liberalization. It was not, my understanding, and I was not part of it, that, uh, just recently, they had conversations about making that a high school. But it was already built, and to build a high school would require additional expensive changes to the building.
And, um, at that same meeting, the paper quoted you as saying that, um, the second referendum might have to be proposed, but no new money just to reallocate the funds. Would you make yourself available if they have to go back to vote for that, to the public, to make the public understand that no new money is being sought, just being reallocated?
If we got to that, I might just pause it.
Okay. Well, we're trying to do that before we get to that.
Can I clarify? I want, I want to say that that's, the goal of the board is, is that we don't have to go back out to vote and that we stay within the spirit of the referendum. What we ultimately want to do is, with the money we currently have, stay within those needs, but reallocate it with the schools in a way where it's most efficient to our current needs. Basically, because at this juncture, when that referendum was made, that was, what, two thousand and sixteen, those plans are what were applied to that. A lot in our town has changed. And, uh, and in that spirit, moving forward, what we did recently also was a, you know, demographic study, have a better idea of how to move forward. So, uh, like I said in the statement, and again, it was a statement, so maybe if I speak a little bit clearer and, you know, more familiar. What we're doing is, we're going back kind of to the prime board in a way, uh, to understand now, within mind, keeping in mind that the new school could be a middle school, and maybe that would suit our needs better. And that, taking that lead, looking at our options with the four lower schools that are within the referendum. And in that process, once we're given those options, we're going to share that with the public to figure out how we can all move forward and that we're all on the same page. Part of the reason for the meeting with the commissioners was, yes, ultimately, we can decide what that building is after we've had it for a year, but we all elected me on the same page. I think one of the meetings, you had asked about what was happening with the new school. And you had said, we are obligated for us to work with, you know, the town and greater community in moving this project forward because it's only in the best interest of the district and our students. So I think that's a plain way of saying what the statement was originally.
And, um, another question. Now, I know this is after the forensic audit, and they're saying somebody is found on the board to have been at fault for one of these statutes that are in violation. Is the board insured, and are we able to go after the insurance to help alleviate the loans that we've taken from the state?
So, um, there is certain fidelity insurance that the Board of Education is required to maintain, whether it's the bond from the superintendent of the business office. Okay, so there's, there's that kind of fidelity, casualty loss, bond insurance that the board does maintain. In terms of other types of insurance that might be triggered under this, whether it's errors and omissions, or something along those lines, um, it's school leaders, the name of the insurance is, it's school leaders' line of insurance. Could there be a claim made? I don't, I can't say that now, as I've said before, I need to see where we are. But school leaders' insurance is there, which is sort of a DNO or HNO type insurance policy, as well as the fidelity bonds that's sure, hold the board secretary of business minister, believe superintendent, but I know this position is actually a bonded position. But again, I couldn't tell you what a claim would be made in the future once, until after, you know, we've gone through the process.
Okay, and if it's found to be people who have less than the district, but were insured and were insured, say you are going after the insurance that we had, are we able to go after the insurance policy if it was a former employee of the district?
Well, and I, and I don't want to speak erroneously because I don't know if it claims full coverage policy, or if we have to, you know, what, what exactly the circumstances are under that particular bond and or policy. So I can't answer that. What I can say is that in light of certain other issues that have gone on, we have notified a carrier on, on other items. I can't, you know, at this point, whether or not they'll provide coverage, we're not there.
Thank you.
Mrs. Amad made a statement that it would be too much money to build a high school, which should have been built, and the high school be made to build a middle school. If you said it costs too much money to build a high school, will it cost less money and what's being built now be less money than a seven, eight, nine building?
Could you repeat that?
You said that it can't be a high school because it would be too much more money, correct?
That's what I was told.
Okay. Firstly, I think it should be a high school, and the town would come up with the rest of the money or whatever, but now there's a big going down. The guys have been with a seven, eight, nine, because you could have made the high school a middle school, which would have been the best possible thing. Well, now, if we're going to change it from seven, eight, nine, which we're paying for that, to a six, seven, eight, do we get a reduction now because it's going to not be a seven, eight, nine building, a six, seven, eight?
What kind of reduction?
Well, what would be less sums, would they change the plans midstream? Like, how are they going to change it?
They're not changing any, they're not changing any plans. Leaving the ninth grade in the high school and moving the sixth grade up requires no changes.
Okay, so how many students does the new little, the, the new school hold? If you do a six, seven, eight, how many students, is that building going to hold you and as making it a six, seven, eight?
I'm going to turn it over to the superintendent, but just, but just basically, it's the same number of kids in each grade.
Again?
Yeah, the buildings will be able, that number of students would plenty, and that would potentially be issued, again, from what I've been told as well, from some studies that I think were running out when I started, that there needed to be some changes, you know, to make it a high school. So it, it can't hold a six, seven, eight.
How many kids are in the high school now?
Seven fifty, seven fifty-six. Yeah, changes every day.
So the new school will help hold how many students?
The new school can hold approximately seven hundred and fifty, I believe, you know, we were told. So like, that, that's the problem, is wouldn't be good today. But we might not be, and that's kind of what we're doing.
But you're doing a six, seven, eight to accommodate the fact that you were short on the referendum for your project for the schools? So that's how you're going to try to get out of your deficit?
No, you, I don't, not really sure if you're saying that for me, my biggest reason...
Well, because what you were talking about at the meeting, that because it would be six, seven, eight, you were able to not do the total amount of what the referendum was for the ninety million, you'd be able to, like, you know, jump, you know, jump around.
I understand you're kind of hand in hand, but I think, I'll start with this, and I can answer more. So seven, eight, nine, whether it's seven, eight, nine, or six, seven, eight, you're talking about approximately the same number of kids. Sometimes you have a grade that's got a lot more or a lot less, but it's usually, like, rare, but sometimes that, yeah.
And also, and also grade amounts fluctuate as time goes on.
Yeah, so, so either way, it's, it's still being pre-graded. So the amount of students in the building is not a problem, whether it's seven, eight, nine, or six, seven.
Or a nine, eleven, twelve, high school setting.
That's totally different.
Could the state have approved the new high school there? I mean, was there any acreage of land or whatever accommodating to have made that a new high school?
I was, I was tied in all, in that type of study, but just in general, in brief conversations, they gave a lot of other issues that brought up, if you made that built in the high school, where would the athletic fields be?
They build along them.
Well, it's, maybe that's not the best possible way. The bottom line is that people that have more expertise in this area than I do, basically said that, in talking to the high school principal, our input was that the high school would be less served, uh, as a high school in its current location. Other engineers and architects said it would cost a lot of money to, and that would be a burden to the taxpayer, uh, to try and convert, uh, that building to a high school. So, so that's how, that's how, that was the...
I know, it would have been nice if we had a new high school, made a middle school, I mean, the high school would have been.
Tonight, we voted in, um, we voted in to get Mr. Vidro. He's just sitting there. When is he going to be?
is he going to be installed? The poor guy sitting here with a broken phone.
I hear you. The point he has to be by a public vote, so public vote is happened, however, he cannot be sworn in until he passes a background check. So as soon as that is done, I mean, it's our, it's our intention to try to be able to do this earlier to get the ball rolling, because it's only a year term, and we're already less than a year. So the swearing-in will most likely be, we would like to accommodate him and get him on board as quick as possible. So we would swear him in, but then also have a swearing-in ceremony, hopefully in February for his family. But as soon as that background check is done, which hopefully is very quickly, we will have a ninth member and the eighth ball helping board.
How many audit inquiries have we had in the past? The same one, or multiple, over, before this one?
Before this one, I think we've had the same one, or, please correct me if I'm wrong, but we've had the same one for at least six years prior. Seven years.
Six, six.
I'm going to say six or seven years, the same audit we've been having.
Maybe we rotate them out for every couple of years?
Well, we, well, like, I don't, I think going forward, like Mr. Bliss is here, I think that that is the key, yes. Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Bliss does very extensive work throughout New Jersey with other school districts, and that's very helpful, and I appreciate his time tonight, he did a wonderful job,
My name is David Silo. You made a comment that social media, the news media, the board of commissioners, never having done anything wrong with respect to the construction of schools. Did I mishear?
You did. I said that the commissioners, as a group, that you also want to build things with this, with the Board of Education.
Subjective.
They built this, they built this new school, that's not subjective, that's right.
Yes, yes, you-
The next step was, the next step was, what I said, was that I felt that I have to speak because of things that appeared in the media and social media, which were based upon rumors, perception-
Over requests.
I'm sorry.
Over requests. They were based on that too.
What did the over requests say?
Well, basically, sir, you have two incumbent commissioners.
Yes.
It takes four votes to bond out of the five commissioners.
Okay.
Four votes. Two of those votes work for this board.
Yes.
In no good bid positions. That's a conflict.
Okay.
That's something that is wrong.
Yes, but-
Period.
No, it's not.
Do you agree, Mr. Time?
No.
You don't? You can work for the school board and vote to benefit the school board?
I don't have a vote at this board.
You don't have an opinion? You don't have an opinion about that either?
If the board asks me to give them an opinion as to what their nature, their conflicts are, I'll provide it.
Okay, well, I just respectfully, this is very easy.
Say it.
Thank you, let's take a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Ramscado, four. Mr. Presuti, four. Mr. Soutiri, four. Mr. Annapolis, four. Mr. Bernardino, four. Mr. Vodoff, four. Mr. Donovan, four. Ms. Keating.
Four. Thank you everyone for coming tonight, thank you for your questions.